Okay, minutes and reports received and filed.
We do not have any today.
What? Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Got Commissioner training Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Friday mornings, East Side Business Association meeting. And then the afternoon, we've got a proclamation to present for two week house celebrating 65 years. Wartsville fish fry. And then I think there's probably something here in Jeff City too, if y'all know which ones.
Are you done with fish fry?
St. Joe and St. Martin's.
St. Joe and St. Martin's this weekend too, so.
Yeah.
Think that's it.
I have a one o'clock mid-mo regional planning commission Zoom meeting today. And I think everything else Jeff has covered.
Yeah, tonight, if anybody can make it to co-add, the meeting is at the Soybean Association at 5:30. And then tomorrow, once they get, soon as they get to the lake, the Central Workforce Caucus is meeting. Thursday is actually the birthday of the USS Jefferson City. She was a leap year submarine. So that'll be her eighth birthday as a leap baby. And then Traffic and Safety has a meeting, which I won't make. And then Saturday and Sunday, I'm at the Lake Skelton for an ESGR National Guard AMRE. So anyway, that is it. Any Commission comments? Bids and contracts, approval to run a sole source add custom carpet courthouse.
The judges and myself, we've looked at multiple carpet samples for Judge Beadham's courtroom. We were looking at ones that were on a cooperative contract, but they weren't rated properly for what we're needing. So we are wanting to match the same color scheme and a similar pattern that's in there now. We found one through Scruggs Lumber, but I'm coming up empty handed when I'm looking elsewhere to find it. So we were just wanting approval to run it as a sole source, and I did get Jill's approval on it. If you guys are okay with that.
Yep.
Take some motion? Make a motion to approve a, and to run a sole source add for custom carpet for the courtroom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agreement for professional engineering services Tanner Bridge Road Safety Improvements.
So this agreement is with Bartlett West for $107,911. And this will provide plans, specifications for the Tanner Bridge Road Safety Improvement, project number 2023-20, 602-0. And this project will realign and widen Tanner Bridge from Route B to the Moore River Bridge. And it will be led in combination with the bridge project.
You got the agreement there?
Yep.
I didn't pull up your email, sorry, behind on this one. So good or got any questions? Okay, make a motion to approve and sign the agreement for professional engineering services with Bartlett and West for the Tanner Bridge Road Safety Improvements, North End Widening Realignment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of contract with Ninth Brain Suite LLC. Is that going to improve, applies to the Commissioners too, so we can improve our brain?
If you would like to join in, I certainly could arrange something.
We need all kinds of stuff.
Got to have more than one to get to the ninth though.
So this is administrative management software for our agency that encompasses everything from schedule, payroll, our learning platform, certification tracking, a lot of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis. We're with a current service provider. And we've been with them from a while dating back to previous administration. And it's become apparent over the last couple of months that they're failing to kind of deliver on some of their key deliverables, especially payroll wise. The last thing that we want to do when we're exporting things out of our schedule and putting it into the county financial software is be manipulating people's hours. You know, that obviously creates a lot of room for mistake and, and some payroll discrepancies possibly that we have to end up kind of going back and rectifying later on down the road. And one of the key things about the current software that we were on is that they were supposed to build the payroll and timekeeping piece to be customized to what we do. It's been over 16 months now and they failed to do so. So we've approached and looked at some other vendors. Deputy Chief Boils and myself have both used Ninth Brain at previous stops. We're confident that they are able to deliver what we need and improve some of the other things that we're looking for. The good news is there is no upfront startup fee. It's a per user, per month charge, which is similar to the software that we're on now. So by making this switch, we'll actually be saving a couple hundred bucks over the course of the year. The other nice thing is that there's a 10% discount if we pay upfront, which roughly comes out to about $900 worth of savings over the course of the next 12 months. So it is actually a cost reduction and an improvement for our agency. So just ask that you sign both the subscription contract and the terms of service today. Quite happy to answer your question.
Do you chief, is that hosted?
It's cloud-based, internet-based, yep.
Brian approved.
If you get on the internet, you can use it, so.
I was gonna let Sam do that to you, but confused the same point.
After, let's say this change takes place, is there an automatic bridge from that to the accounting system that Debbie and her group work with?
So it'll be an Excel export, and that Excel export will automatically upload into the BSNA software that the county uses. And that's the problem that we're struggling with, is that we get an Excel export out of the software that we're currently using, but it's not correct. Because the schedule patterns don't match up and they're not delivering on the things that, the custom things that they said that they would take care of. And then one other thing that we've approached them about modifying the existing contract and making some changes, and they've been completely non-responsive for six plus weeks. So I think they've shown where they stand on this.
Contract?
I'll make a motion to sign a contract in terms of service with Ninth Brain Sweet LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval and signing of contract with Renew Biomedical.
Yep, so this is the contract for biomedical preventative maintenance for our ventilators and IV infusion pumps. This company travels here on site and cycles through all of our equipment doing the annual preventative maintenance. It's pretty highly technical. So we're super thankful that we found a company to come on site and do this for us. They did it for us last year and did a very nice job. I think it's only a couple hundred bucks increase this year, so just asking that we sign the contract quote and the terms of service today with Renew Biomedical. Happy to answer your questions. And both of these are budget items, underwood.
Okay. Make a motion to approve and sign the contract with Renew Biomedical.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we are going to table for the time being the signing of the MMEA proposal for HVAC upgrade, Sheriff's Department. So we'll come back to that at some future date. So we will go to approval and signing of agreement with Professional Engineering Service, the Rainbow Drive Sidewalk Improvement.
So this agreement is with Engineering Surveys and Services for $97,792. This will provide plans and specifications for the Rainbow Drive Sidewalk Improvements, project number 2023-601-0. This project will construct sidewalk along Rainbow Drive from Hunter's Run Road to Terabilla Drive. And this, the total project will be partially funded through the Federal Highway Administration through its Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP. This was a grant that we received last fall for $500,000.
When do you think school kids will be using that new sidewalk? If you had to guess right.
At an earliest, I'd say probably next year. It'll take them a while to get everything designed, and then once we get construction rolling on it, we're probably looking at about a year out yet, so.
Okay.
Let this one Harry's.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign agreement with Professional Engineering Services for the Rainbow Drive Sidewalk Improvement Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Bid award 2024-11 ballistic window and doors for the collector's office.
We bid out the ballistic windows and doors for the collector's office and had the bid opening on February 8th. We had one vendor, GBH, who submitted a response. Our recommendation is to go with option two. It was a bullet resistant level four window replacement for $90,980, along with option three for $44,730, totaling $135,710. Our recommendation is to award this to GBH. Do you guys have any questions?
Did you email those tabs?
Yes. Do you want them?
Yeah, if you got them real quick, I just, I didn't remember seeing them, I'm sorry.
And this was the description for the frame, with frame and without frame? I said, oh, no.
Did you get a check from Larry already? Did we check that to make sure it's not Larry?
Mark will vouch.
There is no binding of that count.
If you can't trust Larry, who can you trust?
That's right.
Oh, yeah, I don't think.
Point of order.
Yeah, did y'all see it already? Y'all got it, okay. Yeah, I just, sorry. I'm good with it. So you just need a motion into award option two and three then?
Yes, yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award the ballistic window and doors for the collector's office to GBH Builders, option two and option three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Unfinished business. Our emergency management director, Nick Teed, started, had talked to us a while back about a grant, and it has been approved, and we need to sign it now. So we're doing this under unfinished business.
Good morning, Commission. This is the grant for our cybersecurity program through the Missouri Department of Homeland Security. We had applied for, with your all's permission back in November, and so we got a response on this, awarding us $180,000 at a 20% cost share. And so that'll bring our total up to, well, that doesn't seem to match, but it says it'll bring our total up to $45,000 to receive that 180. That's not a 20%. So today I am asking that we sign and allow this grant to be awarded.
As am I.
Okay, make motion to sign the civil war agreement with Missouri Department of Public Safety, Office of Homeland Security, DPS Grants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want these back when we're done with them?
No. I'm just trying to help.
You know how many things I gotta sign?
I only gave you one copy, that will work, instead of giving you three this time. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Looks like a turkey tail.
Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
There's no accounts payable.
No, okay. Discussion of the Pringer Family Center Pay Grid.
I take opportunity to introduce Melissa Wilkinson. She's been promoted to superintendent effect on March 3rd with resignation.
Welcome.
Thanks. The discussion as to the pay grid, I believe, is as it relates to the base bill for the local assistant. We had proposed to raise that to $43,000. This was several months ago, back in October, when we interviewed the head for bio medical units. One declined interview when they found out the starting salary, three accepted the interviews. One showed for the RBL request was $43,000. We adjusted the job description because we need a backup on our ESA functions. Some invoicing, they submitted all that information to Shiva. We issued a group adjustment.
Yeah, we're having, this is coming up with other departments as well. And really today to get good people or have to pay more.
It should be noted that that team that interviewed in October is no longer interested as well. So we'll have to initiate the process over again.
I don't remember if we did, did we take any action last time, or we just went?
No.
It was more or less, more or less just to make note of it, or did we approve it?
No, we did not. There were emails going back and forth, but no. We made no decisions.
No, I meant on the previous ones I went through HR, that we changed the grid on. We probably need some kind of action.
When they did yours, I believe, last week or two weeks ago, Debbie did it. Do you recall that they approved it or what they?
Yeah, so that was a change to the, to the actual pay grid. Those, those folks were on publish, take scale. I don't know if you have something similar. But that's what was really actually approved, the actual published piece, so.
So I don't have the actual grid in here, I've got your email, so. And I'm okay with it, I just don't know if we need a grid. You know, Debbie's out today, maybe we wait until she actually has something, a grid to approve, or approve these as presented today and?
Is this the last, is this a email from last Friday?
That's as it relates to the superintendent restructuring and the operational supervisor pay scale.
Yeah, I think that was Friday's email, that's what I was looking at anyway.
I did send her the updated scale along with the updated organizational chart. And then she sent back that she had received everything, job descriptions, updated review, approved, the restructuring proposal, makes sense, but she was even.
Yeah, it was, well, it's not budget neutral, it's actually a savings of a little bit, so.
Okay.
It was just kind of moving some different responsibilities around. Job descriptions were submitted to HR, so.
And we get the blessing of HR?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, okay.
Well, we'll see, when Debbie gets back, we'll find out if we need to take some kind of action on that to approve the new grid or what, but I think you've got our blessings, so.
So what's in front of us today, what action do we need to take today?
Well, that's why I was wondering, we don't actually have the grid. I've got the email that describes what it's doing. It's changing some of the job descriptions and salaries. Just taking from one and adding to another, salaries and descriptions. But the overall savings to the salary line.
Somewhere between 972 and 2,972, depending on the specials that will come in replacing the gentleman that we would like to promote to operational supervisor.
Yep, so in the long run, it's, it's about budget neutral. But there's between 900 and some change to 2,000 difference.
Do you actually have a grid similar to like EMS or sheriff? Or is it, or is it?
We do.
That spreadsheet that you submit with your budget? Do you have a grid?
I can send that to you as well.
Maybe.
That's what I think, I'd like to have.
Approval then of the commission app, it's a separate.
So I think we're fine with this, but once we get the actual grid in front of us, then we can approve it. So if you're all right with that, so.
All right with you? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Request from Capitol, a countywide postage machine.
We're gonna table this. I'm still waiting on some more information on it.
Okay. All right, you can table that. 2024-2025 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
This is a yearly grade that we apply for. This is for, specifically for impaired driving. It's for $7,875. What this does is allow us to put people out specifically looking for DWIs. We call it Wolf Pack.
So Sheriff, what does this require you to do that you wouldn't otherwise do?
It gives us extra money to pay the overtime for people to go out and work these grants.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the 2024-2025 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On both of these, Sam, you signed the first page and the second tab, all three you have to sign.
Oh, no initials?
Well.
Nick, Nick, Nick made me, I had to initial.
I've been seeing a lot of Taylor Swift, so if you could put some hearts on all four corners, I'd appreciate that.
Who's Taylor Swift?
She plays football, I think.
She's a Chiefs fan.
Oh, I've heard of them, Kansas City Swifties.
Okay.
See, you've lost us already.
Aye, okay.
As long as you approve, I don't care.
We're good. Okay, then we are going to the 2024-2025 HMV Highway Safety Grant Application.
So this is a hazards moving violation, again, it's a grant that we apply for every year. This one's for $5,310. This allows us to spend overtime to hit specific spots. So if we have somebody, for instance, that's having trouble on Route C someplace, we can actually have people go and work that area specifically through the HMV. And they're looking for hazards moving violations, so speed, stop signs, that kind of thing.
Good? All right, I'll make a motion to sign the 2024-2025 HMV Highway Safety Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we breathed through that, and I think before we go into closed session.
I don't think we have closed session, I think, I put that on there in case we needed it, and there was some stuff regarding litigation that Jill got answered for me, so unless.
Okay, I think, I think our EMS chief would like to say something. I think our emergency management director would like to say something, so. Yeah, we gotta at least get to 9:30 before we.
So I've talked briefly to each of you offline a little bit about what the future looks like as far as deployment and staffing, and one thing that I dug into a little bit yesterday, and hopefully have a formal presentation for you coming in a couple of weeks, is that through the first 56-ish days of the year, we're up 292 patient, chartered patient contacts. So that's roughly five calls a day additional for service. If we expand that out over, over the year, and that holds, that's about 1,800 calls for service this year, which puts us over the 14,000 call mark that we are on pace for. So the system is dramatically busier through the first 50 some odd days of the year. We don't know why, but it's consistent. And those are just the actual chartered patient contacts that we have. If you look at the CAD entries, which is the computer dispatching system, the incident numbers that have been generated in there are probably about 400 calls above where we were this time last year. And that's probably canceled calls that have been transferred to other jurisdictions, mutual aid contacts that other people have done for us. But there is a significant increase in call volume. Again, this morning, the system has been tremendously busy. So as we focus on what the space downtown allows us to do and some of the conversations, I do believe that, you know, we are at a point where we probably need to examine adding an eighth truck to the system. I know that that comes with some concerns, but I will say that looking through at least the first month of reimbursement, reimbursement is following along the same path as calls for service, probably up $45,000-ish dollars in the first, in January compared to January '23. So I think, I think it's a good thing that those are correlating, but the system is being strengthened on a daily basis.
So do other lines in your budget get affected? Fuel usage and repair of vehicles and so on and so forth?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think we see the fuel usage thing, the good thing is fuel prices have been relatively stable right now. You know, in 2022, when that came into play, we had a big overage on, on that budget line, but for the last two years, they've been kind of, kind of stable. You know, it impacts everything from medical supplies, repairs, so on and so forth. And then we're also, you know, probably not having the same amount of revenue because some of those calls are being ran by mutual aid agencies and so on and so forth. So it's, it's an ever-moving target, but I do think that we are just getting busier and busier.
Well, this is the number one call volume area, so, county. So having two ambulances, to me, makes sense. Well, you have quarters for two crews?
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure, I want to, hot bunking, they do that on submarines.
Nope.
Yeah, we don't need hot bunking.
So you haven't necessarily identified the specific reason for the call volume, but is it, is it fair to say that each station receives more?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a domino effect. So, you know, if you're busier in one area, the system gets drawn into, into the city. And if the county's busy, the city trucks get drawn into the county. So anytime we have an increase in call volume of that magnitude, it gets spread fairly evenly. You know, that's, it's one big thing where we're consistently moving resources up, you know, so when the system gets drawn down, county trucks are moved into headquarters. So there's a lot of travel and, and expense moving resources back and forth to maintain coverage. So we've definitely seen a lot of that lately.
So are you asking for approval today, or you just?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just bringing this up as a, as a data point. You know, I will definitely come up here prepared with a presentation to kind of outline our options and, and present a couple of different choices. A lot of that, it's going to take some GIS work to plot calls and make sure that we're meeting response time requirements and some of that. But I just wanted to give a little heads up and some kudos to our folks, you know. 292 calls, that's a big number in 50 something days, so.
So we're gonna be responding to them calls no matter what.
Correct.
And I grilled you pretty good about this one back and forth, and the thing we could do is pull somebody from maybe out in the outer coverage areas. But, you know, we got those people out there for a reason, and I'd like to be able to keep them out there. So I might kick and scream a little bit, Chief, but I think that's probably the direction we're headed, and we can try it for a while and see what happens. If the call volume goes down by chance, then we can make adjustments back the other way.
Yeah, you know, and that's one thing, you know, I think when I came to you a couple of weeks ago, anecdotally, I felt it was busier. But jumping back into the numbers, it's becoming apparent that we were gonna have to do something. So I just wanted to start that conversation, and like I said, I will bring a full presentation that kind of outlines what our options are. But, you know, from, from a point of feeling like it was busier to actually. like it was busier to actually going back and looking at the data, it is kind of eye raising and, you know, hopefully it balances out a little bit because an 1,800 call increase with no pandemic, no identifiable causes, just people using our resources more, that's a big number for, for us to, to deal with, so.
Well, I know having a corner office, I, the ambulance that we have in the jail, it goes out quite regularly. It'll come up here, it'll, it'll go down that way, but I, yes, I hear, I hear that ambulance responding, so that's, they're really busy here.
Maybe it's a good time to take advantage of this issue since we've opened up this discussion. If you have more calls, you probably also have more questions about out of network.
Yes.
Would you care to explain to the people at home and those in the room why folks who live here, work here and they're used to get, getting their medical services within a network and they, they work hard not to leave the network, but when they get an ambulance bill, it's treated differently?
Yeah, so this is a very complex issue and, you know, it, it's at the root of, of government and, and politics. So as, as an agency, we are tax-supported, we are not tax-funded. We do have a half cent sales tax. Forty percent of that sales tax revenue comes to us to offset operating deficit and make capital purchases. The other 60% of that revenue goes back into offsetting the county's general tax levy. So when we think about that half cent sales tax, we get 40% of a half cent. Obviously, that is nowhere near enough to cover our operations, so the other part that balances our budget is fees for service. And when we talk about fees for service, there's really two different bins that, that those fees generate. So one is government-funded insurance and that's your Medicaid and Medicare and due to the way that the, the current reimbursement is structured, we're receiving pennies on the dollar for the amount of service that we are providing. So that leaves, you know, a complete, you know, budget silo to where we have to make up that deficit to continue to provide the service and that really comes back to, to the private insurers. And, you know, in-network versus out-of-network and what we have historically seen as an industry is that when those contract talks do occur with private insurances, obviously they're lobbying in their best interest to ensure the lowest possible payment back to the agency. We are trying to make sure that we are able to be reimbursed at a level that, that is consummate with the level of service. So if we were to enter into those negotiations, the majority of the time and what has happened previously is that we end up not receiving an adequate reimbursement that is in line with the amount of service that we are providing. So historically, we have chosen to stay out of network to ensure that we are recouping the true cost of that ambulance service.
Well, I think what distinguishes the ambulance service from other medical services, you get choices, do I want to go with my regular doc or do I want to go out of network? When it comes to an ambulance and you call for an ambulance in, in the county, there's only one place that can answer that call.
Yes.
So it's not like you are trying to take advantage of the monopoly, but there's a reason there's monopoly because if you had competing ambulance of service, there'd be a downgrade of the service.
Correct. You know, it's, it's basically, you know, competition drives the death of, of both agencies because, you know, you can no longer adequately fund and do the things that, that, you know, you would if you were a single agency. Same reason why we don't have competing fire departments. You know, back in the, in the old days, you know, insurance companies would contract with individual volunteer fire companies and then, you know, you'd get the, the race to the fire and guys would, you know, protect the fire hydrants. This is, you know, early 1900s stuff, but, you know, we, we see where public safety is not a competitive business, it's just a business that, service that we provide and we need to identify funding sources to ensure that we're delivering an adequate level of service. You know, a good example, you know, of, of the value that we bring and why, why maybe our, our rates are what they are. Yesterday, there was a very critical patient that came out of Capital Region that received some very invasive technical procedures cardiac-wise. They were put, put on a heart pump, they were on a ventilator, had numerous IV infusions. In most jurisdictions, I would view that as probably something that would be outside the scope of, of a ground ambulance service. You would probably see that patient referred to air medical, but we were able to respond and in a very short time load that patient up and get them up to the university safely and in a stable condition. We would not be able to do that if we didn't have the equipment that we had and in the long run, our, our billing for that type of patient contact is probably about one tenth of what that bill would be from an air medical provider, given the same level of service that was provided. So while, you know, maybe our rates are, are what we need to sustain them, we do feel that we provide a very good value for the level of service that we're providing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for letting me share, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Emergency Management Director Nikteet Sartar.
Well, you went over 9:30, Sam, so I will be very, very short, but this year we'll participate again in the Severe Weather Preparedness Week. This is an initiative through the National Weather Service and through the state of Missouri to make sure that we prepare folks who are, you know, in that transition between winter and spring and most notably, Wednesday, March 6th at 11:00 AM, instead of hearing the chimes you would normally hear from our outdoor warning system, you are going to hear the actual siren go off with the voice prompt and the siren and then the voice prompt ending the drill. And that drill gives us the opportunity to practice our tornado plans and make sure that we have our safe rooms, you know, so that we can go to those and, and make sure we've identified those ahead of times. It also gives schools and daycares and other institutions the ability to practice those plans as well.
What time again is that?
That'll be 11:00 AM on March 6th.
We need, we need to let the people know.
We've been trying to, you know, put messages out there on Facebook and we'll try to continue those messages and hopefully we'll get some more following, so. But thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Now, but if a tornado's on the way, you, you call those fake ones off, right?
That's, that's correct, yeah. If, if there's any weather that appears as if it's actually going to produce a tornado, then we would not hold that drill there. There'd be another day for that drill.
Right. Okay.
All right, hey, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anything else? Does our collector wish to, wish to say anything?
No. What a fine job you're doing.
Nobody seconded that motion.
Okay. Well, we did have one position that wasn't on that email that we were talking about for Toby and she already left, but it was the, an increase in salary to the $43,000 and it had gone through HR and Sheila had asked if we would have approved that, but I don't, I don't have that and I think she said that she didn't have anybody right now. The prior person that was interested is not, so I, I think we're all okay with it, but we'll just take formal action next week when we have that together, the restructuring and then also for that position, so if something comes up and we've got to come in and meet or whatever we can.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah, we're going to come back from the lake so well-trained. I mean, last year Jeff was so well-trained, he could play dead, he rolled over, fetching sticks, he wasn't really good at, but I mean, we, we get this training, we come back so much wiser than when we left and if you believe that, I've got some land down on the river, but I'll sell you. Okay. We entertain a motion to stand in recess?
I'll make a motion to stand in recess until 4:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fetch, here, fetch.
I'm not very good at listening. LB, we should have had?